Zoom. Bring the city council meeting of November 5th to order, please. I'll remind people that there's a sign up sheet out there. We're trying to limit to seventeen. Per the new instructions, the, uh, the health department is very worried about us, uh, ramping up our, uh, problems and so we're trying to help them out by being rigorous about how many people we have in here. Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Carr.
Here.
Mayor Protem Labar.
Here.
Councilmember Keyes. Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Pfaff. Councilmember Zulawaka.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If everybody'd join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. Suzanne, you might have a few words for us, I understand.
She stands tall on the edge of a broad.
Oh. We're gonna do the election stuff first. Okay, thanks, Rob. Um, as council will see and the audience will see, we had listed on here the swearing in of the newly elected council member. We have, um, decided we need to wait until the returns are official from the county. That's eight days after the election. I wanted to go through though, the winner, announce the winner. The tentative winner. Go through some of the votes so everybody knows, um, what the election looked like. So I'd like to start with, um, the totals and the votes. Stephanie Alfieri received two thousand one hundred and fifty-nine votes. Don DeZellem received six hundred and sixteen votes and Catherine Nakai received one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three votes. Alfieri had forty-five point five seven percent of the vote. DeZellem thirteen percent of the vote and Nakai forty-one point four three percent. I confidently feel we can announce that, um, Stephanie Alfieri will be our next council meeting member. Alfieri is up currently by a hundred and ninety-six votes. She's the preliminary winner to be sworn in on November nineteenth after the election results are finalized and the election is canvassed. The total ballot returns, this is really what's exciting to me, besides Stephanie being elected. What is excited to me is that in our April election that we had, I think council will remember, we had twenty-two fifty, two thousand two hundred and fifty ballots returned. That was a record for us in our municipal election. For this election, for the question that we had on the ballot, we had four thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight voters voted on our little question. The return on that, we mailed six thousand one hundred and eight ballots, so the return was a seventy-eight percent return. So I'm very, very proud of the community, um, to have been so interested and had such high returns on our ballots. Currently, I've been working with the county clerk. Currently, there's about a hundred and thirty-five ballots out there that still need to be counted. So if every single one of those ballots was even for someone other than Ms. Alfieri, she would still be the winner with, because she has the hundred and ninety-six votes. The hundred and thirty-five ballots that are still out there, I'd like to explain why they're still out there and when they'll be counted. I think council will remember, every time we have an election, we send out what we call is Uwakawa votes. And those are the ballots that go to our military and overseas individuals. They have eight days till after the election to have those back to us. So we have to, technically, we have to wait for those ballots to come back so we can count them. There's, um, technically, there's twenty-five of those ballots out there that still have not been returned. They may not be returned either. We'll have to just see. There's fifty, approximately fifty ballots out there that still need to be cured. What that means is, we, um, do, now we do signature verification on all the ballots. And so if someone forgot to sign their ballot or if their signature didn't look right, the election official sends a letter to that voter and they have seven days after the election to come back, cure, we call it cure the ballot, and then have their signature count. Then the final ballots that are out there are, we have approximately sixty ballots that are out there that the county has a reciprocal agreement with other counties where people can put their ballots in an El Paso County voting box. They could put it in a Park County voting box and then the county gets them all, collects them. We do the same thing for El Paso County. If someone lives up here, or rather than them driving, well, if they work down there and live up here, we can do that with their ballots. So where we, we have those, um, waiting for the clerks to return them to us. So all in all, um, we're good to call the election. The margin, I've calculated the margin for a recount. The margin in this election with the amount of votes that were received for a recount would be eleven votes. So we do not have a difference of eleven votes. So that's what I have to report about the election.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Next, we've got an exciting, uh, announcement here. We have Clint Vascholtz, who's, uh, one of our extraordinary individuals that, uh, participates, uh, constantly in our, uh, Pikes Peak Hill Climb and other things. And, uh, so I wanna read a little, uh, little announcement, if you will. "Hardy congratulations to Woodland Park native Clint Vascholtz, the ninety-eighth running of the Pikes Peak International Hill Climb on America's Mountain on August thirty, twenty twenty, was a tight and unpredictable race fraught with a two-hour, two-hour ice delay, slick surfaces, car troubles, and no fans or spectators. But Clint drove the twelve-point-four-two-mile, hundred-and-fifty-six-turn course up Pikes Peak in his twenty-thirteen Ford Open with the overall fastest time of nine minutes, thirty-five point four-nine seconds at a speed of over a hundred and twenty-five miles an hour." I don't know how you do that. I've driven that myself. There's no way. Anywhere on that mountain, you can go a hundred and twenty-five. Crowning him the twenty-twenty king of the mountain. He is the first American in fifteen years since two thousand and five to win this title. Clint, a veteran racer and former NASCAR driver, began his race career at four years old. A graduate of Woodland Park High School, he has appeared at every Pikes Peak International Hill Climb since nineteen ninety-two. And after twenty-seven attempts, hundreds of runs up Pikes Peak, thousands of practice hours, the king of the mountain crown at the Broadmoor Pikes Peak International Hill Climb was hard fought and well won by someone in the city is privileged to call a born and bred local. According to Clint, and with encouragement from nearby race teams, the ninety-eighth running was a wild ride during a crazy year, especially with no participants, uh, spectators. In addition, his first king of the mountain crown this year, he claimed his twenty-fourth division title, winning the open wheel division and breaking his twenty-seventeen record. When he's not racing or working on his race car, Clint operates Vascholtz Automotive Repair just around the corner from, uh, City Hall at one sixteen North Pine Street, Woodland Park. I don't have a phone number, so it's not an official advertisement. We look forward to seeing that, what you and Cody, your son, will do in the ninety-ninth and hundredth Race to the Clouds in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, when hopefully we'll have some spectators. We wish you all the best. Thank you for putting Woodland Park on the map and letting us share in your wild victory ride to the summit and across the finish line. And I've got a couple of things for you, if you'd like to step up.
Mayor, I think that, um,
Oh, yes.
Rob was able to get a video.
She stands tall on the edge of a broad plain. She symbolizes all that is good about us and all that inspires us. She is America's mountain. A road was built, stretching to the clouds. Soon, men came to challenge Pikes Peak. Some succeeded, some failed. For one hundred years, they have braved the danger in pursuit of the honor of being called king of the mountain.
I don't believe that time will ever get broken up here again, ever.
Race to the Clouds, one hundred years in the making. A documentary film capturing the history of America's second oldest auto race. The Broadmoor Pikes Peak International Hill Climb. Hear the stories of the men and women who challenged the mountain, featuring historic footage and interviews with past champions.
Good Lord put me on this earth to win Pikes Peak.
I knew I could win if I could just get to the top and not make a mistake.
It was a really good, good feeling. I'm really satisfied to, to reach the top. First, the time is reduced.
I think I've had more fun up here than anybody that's ever been on this hill.
In all categories, it captures.
An event that nobody else compares to.
Race to the Clouds, one hundred years in the making. Now available on DVD.
Thank you. Can I just comment on that DVD? For those of you who haven't seen it, I had the opportunity to see that this week. It goes for an hour, hour and a half, maybe an hour and a half or two hours. It is fabulous. The history of our hill climb is, uh, is, I mean, it set, um, Colorado in, on the map for the auto industry. And, uh, for Clint to win this race, this is like a really big deal. The, uh, the French have taken it for a number of years. So have the Japanese. Uh, they brought all their fancy cars up here, developed technology specifically for this altitude. And, uh, so for a hometown boy to take the title, that's, this is very, very awesome. So congratulations. And I do, I will pass it around to council, this, like, you can rotate to see it. If you're interested, let me know. Yeah. Yeah.
Ready?
Yep.
Thank you. So we have this special, uh, coins, unlike the, uh, pins that are all over town. Very special. Darren came up with these. They're a terrific collector's item and there's hardly any out there at this point. The, uh, Sally gave me this and this is from the, uh, preservation committee. It's a beautiful thing. It would come out dearly with these things. So giving you these two things, I appreciate your, your efforts, sir. Thank you.
Can I give a picture if you go shaking hands, looking at? Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I just wanna thank everybody for acknowledging this. Um, it was a special day, um, for my family and my crew, my friends, and all my sponsors that have helped me throughout, uh, the year since, like, Val said, ninety-two. You know, I grew up with, uh, some sort of blood in my system that makes me crazy and wanna do this. Pikes Peak is a very, very interesting event, um, internationally. It's, it's, it's getting a lot bigger. And, you know, I'm just proud to be part of it. I'm glad that they were able to, the hill climb, uh, people get the race under and done this year, um, with all the restrictions and, and such. You know, not having fans was, was a little bit different, but, uh, you know, I wanna thank Teller County and the city of Woodland Park. I've done business with my father and family here for, uh, over, I think, fifty years. You know, without the, without the community behind us, uh, you know, you, you can't really do what we do. So I wanna just thank everybody in, in the county. It was a very special, uh, thing to be here. And, um, you know, I wanna thank the Lord Jesus. He, uh, he gave me the, the ability to do what I do. And, you know, without that, uh, you know, I'd probably be slow. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations on your win and we're glad that we were able to have you here this evening and we're happy that you're a part of our community. And my entire family thanks you for being a fine automotive technician because I think we've brought every single car to you probably for the last thirty years. So, thank you. We're glad you're a part of this community and we're lucky to have you.
Congratulations and thank you so much for what you do. You are crazy and certifiable, but it's just awesome and I'm sure you have a great, great deal of fun doing that. So thank you. Glad you're here this evening.
I just had one other quick thing too. A citizen, Linda Evans, was adamant that we support you and, and do this. And she also brought this to our attention and she deserves a little bit of thanks as well for suggesting that the council do this. And she's paid attention to your racing and she's also very grateful that you're a part of our community, so.
Thank you. Um, I do have a car that'll go one twenty-five, but not there. No way. Well, you could probably get my car up to one fifty, but I, I can't, so. Anyway, thank you, sir. You bet.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you so much. Awesome. Yeah.
All right. Uh, no additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. We're on to the consent calendar. Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening on the consent calendar, we have two sets of minutes for approval. The first set is from the October fifteenth regular city council meeting. And the second set is from the October twenty-first special city council meeting.
Thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you. We have a second. Mayor Protem Labar.
Thank you.
Second. Suzanne.
Carr.
Yes.
Keyes. Labar.
Yes. Yes.
I'm not sure. Has councilmember Pfaff joined us? Okay, Zulawaka?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We have no, uh, buddy who signed up for public comment on items not on the agenda, so we'll proceed to unfinished business. And we will now continue on with the budget discussion. And, uh, Darren, Emily, do you have any words? We're on page thirty-five, as, as I remember. Uh, do you have any additional insights? That you'd like to parlay?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I, I don't, we're just continuing what we started on the twenty-first of October, which is going through the budget that was presented on October fifteenth. And, um, we ended in Culture and Recreation Fund. Um, we, I did, you know, there's been adjustments, of, of course, since the last meeting, but everyone will receive the updated budget, um, at the next meeting. And the full, um, updated document will be sent out before then.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're on page thirty-five and we're starting with the lodging tax fund. And, uh, as before, um, we will go through page by page and I'll pause. If anybody has concerns, comments, or additional, uh, items to discuss, please holler. Page thirty-five, hearing none. Rusty, I'm sorry, I can't see you. Um, please just speak up and inter, interrupt us if you would.
Will do.
We have echo. What's that? With the echo? Yeah.
Too many things going on.
Page thirty-six. Uh, I just have one question. It's been a, um, a couple of weeks since we looked at this. Where's the other, the forty-two eight? We got twenty-five thousand for the visitor center contract, uh, out of the lodging tax. Where's the additional balance of that allocation out of?
Um, it comes from the general fund.
It comes out of the general.
So it's just, this is, um, it's just a breakdown based on what we expect to receive in the lodging, in lodging tax funds in twenty twenty-one. And then you'll see the breakdown, um, because it is, it has, you know, specified uses being beautification, downtown projects, um, that, uh, that the money has to be designated for. So that breakdown just shows you where those funds will go to supplement the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Page thirty-seven. Like I say, anybody has anything, just speak up. Page thirty-eight, we're now in Conservation Trust Fund. Moving on to four-ten fund. On page thirty-nine. Forty. I make note at the bottom of forty, we have a flail mower, whatever that is, um, allocated. Would anybody like to tell me what a flail mower is? I, I have a vision of it. Doesn't probably work with a flailing motion, but maybe it does. I don't know.
I don't know what it is.
I don't either. Does it go like this? Robin.
That's exactly what it does.
Really?
No, it's a, an attachment to the back of a tractor, um, and folds down so that we can mow along the trails and then it folds back up.
So that's the flail?
That's the, it flails and then it flails back up.
Thank you. Thank you. I was, I was very curious about that.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I know that this is one of the places we have vendor fee, uh, allocation. This is the four-ten fund where that portion goes.
Right. So that has been in the latest draft, again, that will be presented at the next meeting. That's been combined into that line item. So it's a total of those two combined now. Because the vendor fee is, as we've discussed before, incorrectly named. It's not, it's not an additional fee. It's a hundred percent of what's collected.
So we'll see different terminology.
Right. You won't see the vending line item.
And Emily, uh, just for my notes, if I take the two million, one seventy-two, five oh six, add seventy-one, six ninety-three, the new line item will have the total of those two numbers, correct?
Uh, correct. And that does, uh, bring up something I did wanna note is that, um, due to where we are at the sales tax currently, I have adjusted our projection for inflation to, from one point five percent to two percent. So you will see that reflected in the next budget. So that adjusted, um, slightly, you know, our revenues for both, obviously, the sales tax one percent that goes to the four-ten streets fund, which we're looking at now, as well as the general fund, which is, um, the two percent.
Emily, if you, well, at the end of the, that's it tonight? Let me check. That'll be the next meeting, actually. You'll be presenting the, the update to the sales tax, right? Yeah.
Yeah, um.
It's coming out on the thirteenth or something like that.
The next meeting is on the nineteenth.
Which is in, is part of the indicators that, that gave us the,
Yeah.
the trends that resulted in that increase.
Now, I, I remember us talking about this line item on page forty that, um, the, it's not, it's not, it was not broken out or it is broken out at this point. The next version, it's all gonna be one under the sales tax, right? But you're not gonna add in the seventy-one thousand. I, I seem to remember some talk about.
It'll be all combined. Uh, Jason and Emily and I had this discussion. The intent from what we got from council, uh, notes we took were that we wanted to do a separate spreadsheet that showed all the four-ten projects and all of the, the general fund projects that would result from the vendor fee just be captured in a separate spreadsheet so that, um, the community and the city council could look through that and see where those dollars are being spent and hold that accountable.
Thank you.
Kind of like a subsidiary, Roger.
Yeah. Appreciate that.
I have one question.
Go.
The inflation adjustment that you spoke about is for twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
Thank you.
And we'll note, we've got three hundred grand in there for, uh, number six note, which is the sidewalk improvements, the multimodal options fund grant. That's a nice, uh, nice feature we have to improve those ADA situations, I think. Page forty-one, forty-two. So, just before you sail off the, the sidewalks, so are we carrying over any of the projects for sidewalks from this calendar year to, to twenty twenty-one?
Yes, we do. Uh, if you want to, Robin, are you, are you prepared to talk about that?
We just have, uh, one project that we're carrying over for next year and that's, um, it's the, called the Safe Routes to Schools Project. Um, and it's a new sidewalk that runs along Henrietta, Laurel, and, um, South Street from kind of approximately the memorial park over to the, um, high school. So that one is, uh, a grant that we have received through Pikes Peak Regional, PPACG, Pikes Peak Area Council of Governments. And, um, we just didn't have a, a chance to get it through, um, and contracted, um, until late this fall. So we thought it was more prudent to carry it over to the spring.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm on page forty-four. Which is our Water Utility Enterprise Fund, five-ten fund. And off to page forty-five and forty-six. Speak up on Zoom if we have any. Rusty, Jim, I don't know if Jim's out there yet.
I'm still good, Val. Thank you.
I, I beg your pardon. Councilmember Neal and Councilmember Pfaff.
Mayor Carr, I'm still good.
Okay, thank you. Is Jim on? I don't know.
He's not.
He's not? No. He's on East Coast time.
Is there a que, question?
It's, it's a question. It's just administrative question about the packet.
Thank you.
We're handling it. Thanks.
I just was curious.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've asked Suzanne to field all the administrative stuff.
Okay.
Since I forgot my tablet. Forty-seven and forty-eight, still in the five-ten fund. Forty-nine and fifty. Water Utility Enterprise Fund, continuing.
Uh, Mayor Carr, I have a question.
Please.
On the first line on forty-nine, under five-ten dash three forty-one dash eleven hundred, uh, I see, uh, it, it's, it's minor. It's only twenty-four hundred dollars, but I see a salary increase. Could, could somebody, um, address that, please?
I think it's based off of the,
Go ahead.
Sorry, I think it's based off of a potential for, um, a certification? Potentially?
No, I'm, so.
Thirty-two-ten, is that the one we're talking about?
The salaries and wages full-time.
I don't see a, not an increase.
Eleven hundred.
Yeah, that's, it's, that's a carryover from year-end projections. It doesn't increase into, into twenty twenty-one.
Now, the, the adopted budget for twenty twenty was one oh five, four hundred. And this year, we've made the, the budget one hundred and seven thousand. So, um, for budgeting purposes, what accounted for the salary increase?
Um, I believe, so when I was looking at projections, um, and then based on certifications and increases, um, for employees obtaining those certifications, I adjusted that.
For the grade?
Yeah.
But it's, so, yeah, it's fairly minor, as you noted.
Kip, if you want to, you can kinda talk about the certification process. Kip, if you want to, you can kind of talk about the certification process that the water department does to, as, you know, from professional development perspective and how that, how that works.
Well, and I think I can answer this even clearer. So page forty nine, salaries and benefits. There was a slight increase this year because we did compensate one of our employees for additional work that was done during COVID up at the county. So Kelly Simkins did participate in that and we compensated for that. I don't remember that exact dollar amount off the top of my head. I don't believe it was twenty four hundred. I'd have to dig into that a little bit more. But depending on where ADG was in the projection for the end of the year, that would be my assumption on why that's a little bit higher.
Kip, I'm, I'm sorry, it was a sixteen hundred dollar increase. Now, for twenty twenty one, since our expectation is that COVID will be decreasing, will we be going back to the one oh five, four hundred that it previously was, since there shouldn't be a need for an extra?
Right. So flat budget, there's nothing slated for an increase for twenty twenty one for salaries. This, this line item is basically myself and Kelly Simkins, the utilities technician. We just have to double check the math on that sixteen hundred.
It may have been a typo on my end, honestly. So I apologize.
Okay. Then my question to the mayor is, in looking around the room, I know we're not voting. Do you get the sense that the council members are comfortable with that explanation?
Yeah, let me put a couple more cents worth in. I sent off earlier today a breakdown of different GL items with the people associated with it. And Kelly's one of these people that works in different areas. And so there's going to be some flexibility in, in how it's charged around. I sent that out to the whole council. And it was very helpful for me to actually understand some of these questions. I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilmember Neil, because it's, it's always good to drill down on these things. I think Kelly is one, well, both Kelly and Kip are in several different places, or at least a couple of different places that I can see. And so I, I think that distribution probably has to do with what they did last year versus next year. That's my guess. Sorry if I'm stepping out of bounds.
They're split between water and wastewater funds and allocation of their full salary, because they soup, they, or the administration for both.
Yep.
So there's a number of employees that are split, administration and then field services, because they work on both water and wastewater.
So, yeah, this break down's helpful for me. Thank you.
So Mayor Carr, when you look around the room again, does it look like everybody's nodding yes, they're, they're comfortable with that without taking a vote?
I want you to be comfortable with it. And I don't see, I think the rest was, Councilmember Zuluaga has words to say, so let's hear what he has to say.
Thank you.
Are you finished with your questions on this section?
I, I am, Robert. Mr. Zuluaga.
Okay, so on legal services. I see we had a projection for twenty twenty of sixty thousand, actually only spent ten, and then we're back up to putting sixty thousand in the budget. Are we expecting some sort of legal challenge that we have to?
Every day is an adventure. If I could predict what the system's going to do, what's going to break, what is going to damage where and when. I just, that's a placeholder for those services when we need to take care of those legal matters with, whether it's a, it's a, and I hate to jinx anything, whether it's a home that's flooded due to a water main break or, you know, there's some damage in other ways that have, has occurred because of those, those emergencies. That's why that placeholder is there.
Kip, we also use that to, to address water rights assessments, right, as well, or no?
Nope.
It's a different one?
That's a different, we have a separate water attorney for that. That's, that's stuff outside of what Jason does.
So is this the good neighbor stuff, maybe, some of it?
Um, we haven't had to use that. So I couldn't, I mean, I guess it potentially could be, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
Mayor Carr, I have a question then.
Just, just a second. Rusty, just a second.
Yes.
Yeah. So back in twenty nineteen, it was only like eighty five hundred, ten grand this year. So I'm just wondering, is there a way we can put that into? Can we put that, can you make an application for it if you have such a thing, as opposed to putting a placeholder? Is there a pro and con?
What's, what's interesting about this line item was we used to allocate it in the general fund. It was part of a transfer. Previous finance director wanted to pull those fees out and be direct costs and not part of that transfer. So this was part of that transition. And it really fluctuates year to year. I can do what council would like. However, I mean, it's, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it. It stays there and goes into the fund balance.
Okay, great.
And you'll see, for twenty eighteen, actual, it was almost fifty three thousand. So I don't know. That's just.
It wasn't an office party. I'm certain of that.
I think the audit would catch that.
I'm finished, Rusty. If you want to go ahead and ask your, whatever the next.
Actually, my question was exactly what you had asked, because I'm, my thoughts are instead of breaking out a placeholder of such a large amount relative to what was spent, why we would not look at consolidating the legal services under, like the general fund, and then the departments could request a chunk of that. That way we don't have a, a block, what seems like an overkill when you look at the history, a big block in this department, a big block in another department. Wouldn't it be better just to have a larger than what we currently have in the general fund that would eliminate a bunch of fairly sizable blocks spread out? Exactly what you're getting to, Mr. Zuluaga.
The reason for that, go ahead, oh, okay, is the, this is the enterprise fund. So our, it's a separate fund and legally we have to separate out our expenditures in this fund if it's specifically for for the water and wastewater, in this case, water.
Councilmember Case, please.
Enterprise funds are limited and, and if they receive any subsidy or any beyond a certain level from the general fund or other funds, then their enterprise fund status is compromised. And so anything associated with the enterprise fund needs to be accounted for in that fund.
That is a good explanation. Thank you very much.
I knew you'd have the answer. Thank you. Was there anything up on the?
No, Mayor, but for the record, I would like to put in the record that Finance Director Cassimopoulos said she will get you the answer to the eleven hundred question that Councilman, Councilmember Neil had.
Sixteen hundred, yep. Okay.
No, line item eleven hundred.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
Okay. She had said she'd check that out. And so instead of us just guessing and everything, she'll figure that out.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Taking away all the fun. Okay. Page fifty, continuation of the five ten fund. Water treatment operations now. Any questions there? Hearing, seeing none, we'll move to fifty one. I have some highlights on the capital outlay. Obviously, we've got some interesting capital outlays here with various, we, we've talked about these before. If you'd like to review them, note one and note four, I guess.
Absolutely. Note one is just water distribution improvements in there. I have two hundred and fifty thousand for the water meter replacement program. This was the third year of that program where we had budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand. I'm continuing moving forward with that to try to finish up the replacement of the meters. Currently, we're at about sixty six percent of those meters replaced. And this year we were a little behind because we weren't able to go into residence homes due to COVID. So I'll just continue moving forward. So we'll probably see another amount in twenty twenty two to finish up that program. But that was an in-house program that we had estimated at two point three million dollars to do. If we contracted out, we ended up doing it in-house for about a million. Other than that, we have the six hundred thousand for the Dove program. Dove stands for disinfection outreach verification evaluation. It's a requirement from the state that we have to basically verify our chlorine residuals through the water system. And we will be moving forward with that project. We haven't received a formal letter saying we have one year to complete, but we're trying to be proactive and we've actually postponed it for the last three years. So we're expecting that letter to come and we want to be ready for it when it comes. And then the three hundred and fifty thousand for the radium removal system. Our wells in the North Well Field, the Upper North Well Field are high in radium. That causes us to use more of our expensive augmentation water to dilute that radium down to a reasonable level to meet state standards. I'd like to remove that radium so we don't have to use our precious augmentation water that is very expensive to bring here and remove that radium before we use too much augmentation water. So that number there is a very rough number. We are currently discussing options with a design engineer, trying to figure out what the best scenario, or best case scenario for options that we have.
Is that going to be an ongoing expense or is that to solve the problem completely? You know, like is that setting up some sort of system so that it, it removes it on a regular basis or?
Depending on which method we choose to remove the radium, there will be annual maintenance costs associated with that system. And then item, I'm sorry, was it item?
Yeah, I jumped right past two and three, but if you, if the rest council wants to hear about them, that's fine. I went to four because it's all interesting for the community.
So item four is the reservoir. I've been budgeting that for quite some time. I haven't had a whole lot of time to spend on this due to all job duties. Jason and I currently have had conversations with the Forest Service on some concerns that he has found with the deed and some of the wishes of the Boy Scouts. So we've been working through that and will continue to do that. Hope, I'm hopeful that we can bring something to council within the next year.
Thank you. Council, any other questions?
If I could just manage expectations.
There you go.
That'll be a very long process to get through when you're dealing with the federal government and understandably so. But we did spend, I don't know, hour and a half or so on the phone with the local entity to, I forget, what is his name?
Jeff Hover.
Jeff, to kind of discuss what his perspective is, kind of what our needs are, what, what we anticipate, the Boy Scouts. So it's an ongoing process. We're just wanting to make sure it's done right so that we don't have problems fifty years from now after we've built a thing. So we want to make sure we're doing it very cautiously cognizant of all of the issues and solve problems today as opposed to kicking it down for our predecessor or whoever comes after us.
Successors, yeah.
Successors, yes.
I appreciate that effort.
I can brag about the other items if you'd like.
Sure, feel free.
Some of the other items are continuing with this data system upgrade. SCADA stands for System Controls and Data Acquisition. So it's basically our communication hub between all the facilities, the plant, and then technology and how we operate that plant. The current controls are original to the plant in nineteen ninety seven. They currently don't make them anymore and we're trying to replace a lot of those controls and continue with that process. From there, I have a front wall repair. The front wall of the plant has rusted and we've done our best to patch it as best as possible. But we need to take care of our water plant. Needs to stay nice and clean. So keep, keep the critters out, if you will. And then well SCADA, that's just another form of SCADA, just at the wells themselves. And we installed wells on Lucky Lady Drive in two thousand and five. And we want to be able to control those wells without having to drive out there, turn a, turn a manual switch to turn them on and off and try to control pumping rates as groundwater levels fluctuate and as demand fluctuates. Then lastly, I just have on here fifteen thousand for pumps. Our pumps continue to go out and it's just O and M on those pumps.
Thank you. I'm going to move to page fifty two, which is Water Field Services, unless council has any questions. Or even if they don't. Fifty three, Water Customer Services.
Can we just stay on to fifty two for one second?
Yeah.
I noticed that the insurance on this is just a lot higher than I've seen the insurance percentages on other, in other areas. Why is this gone up almost eighty percent or something?
It's flat, excuse me, from what the adopted budget or, sorry, it has a four point five percent increase from the adopted twenty twenty budget. It may have, you know, with insurance, we don't know exactly what folks are going to select or, you know, it's, it changes due to, you know, family, family changes, job changes. So that, that insurance line item is, is usually our best guess as far as what, what we think people will pick. And especially for this year, going forward, we are changing our insurance carrier for health insurance for our employees. So it's, it's an estimate.
Does that, does that make sense?
It, it does accept that our project, our projected was, our, our, our projections for the year last year is like twenty four thousand. So what's changing that's causing us to go back to the annual projections?
We just have to, we have to project worst case scenario each year because that's, that's what, what we have to do, right? In terms of what, if every single member within that, that, that benefit cost center wants to get family healthcare, that's the worst case scenario. They often won't, but they certainly can if they, they, if they wanted to and we couldn't stop them from doing, you know, you understand that, that's kind of the, the issue. You have to plan for the worst case scenario.
If we go up to salaries, I'm guessing a lot of the salary decreases off the adopted into the projection or COVID related. I don't know if this one was or not, but that's, that's why that gap between those two columns looks significant, but I don't know that that's the case.
Well, I can add, so Field Services is a five man team. Currently, we have one vacancy. So that's why you see the savings in, for twenty, or for year end.
Because you got one.
So you budget worst case, assuming like, like we said with the benefits, but there is one less employee in that, in, on that team right now.
And you intend to fill that position this year, this coming year?
If we could get some qualified applicants, that'd be amazing.
We're budgeting for it.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Neil?
I, I'm comfortable. I wish we would not go up, I, I wish we would have at a maximum kept the adopted budget amount of forty two, nine, nine, three versus going up, but.
As you can see, the total, total Water Field Services.
Yeah.
It, it is, it's actually less overall as a total budget. If you look at the bottom. It actually is a reduction.
Correct.
But what they, what they did is they actually will find some cost savings throughout the rest of the budget.
Well, and the reason for, yeah, correct. And the reason for the increase is due to that four point five percent increase for healthcare.
Yeah, which was going to be significantly higher. So we did really well to only have four point five, I understand. Fifty three. We're Water Customer Services. Hearing none, we're going to the five twenty fund, which is wastewater utility enterprise fund. On page fifty four, which is the summary page. Fund balance summary. I'm going to flip to fifty five and fifty six, council, if you have any questions.
Something I'd just like to point out might, might make things easier when we go through this fund, when it comes to personnel. We're looking at basically the same personnel in admin, field services and customer services. They're split between the water and wastewater fund. So we're talking about the same people and the same, they're just split. Is it still sixty forty?
Sixty five, thirty five.
Sixty five, thirty five split for those employees between those two funds. So they should emulate each other in those departments. 6535 split for those employees between those two funds. So they should emulate each other in those departments. It might just be helpful.
Thank you. It is.
Between 510 and the 20.
Yep. 55, 56. We're once again on the 520, which is the Wastewater Utility Enterprise Fund. My first year on council, people were spouting these 410, 510, 520. I had no idea what they were talking about. So I apologize if I'm now going there myself.
Things I'd just like to point out too for council for, and I know you're looking for questions. I apologize for interrupting, but if you look at 2018 actuals to 2021 requested budget, they're almost the same number. I mean, so revenues, that's your, your sewer charges. Revenues really haven't changed at all in three, four years. So I think we're, we've done a pretty good job of trying to keep our rates low every year. And then move forward. We did have a rate increase in 2017, but that was to build the wastewater treatment plant or the expansion of that plant. So we did have a significant increase in capital fees to cover that debt. But just usage fees has stayed the same. I'm very proud of that fact. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yep, I was on council for that. So I do appreciate your efforts in these, in these funds. 55, 56, going once, going twice, gone. 57. Wastewater Operations, 58, Wastewater Administration.
Mayor Carr.
You go, go for it.
On the training and travel of the line 5800, we had a 2,000 budgeted. I know you've dropped it down to 1,500, but we only spent 1,000 last year. Can you talk us through the justification of the 1,500? Beyond, there's a rollover. Is there a reason that we need to go up that high, $1,500?
Absolutely. If you look at 2018 and 2019 actuals, you have $143 and 129. We need to catch up on some training. I don't have that slatted for anything specific, but it's, it would behoove council to have myself and Kelly up to speed on any new water law coming down the pipe. Or, and waste on the wastewater side. So these go hand in hand. So this training is also in, in regards to the water side. So it's just keeping up to speed on what's, what's new. How we can be efficient in our wastewater treatment operations with those new technologies. I don't typically spend it. If I don't see that there's any training available, obviously from the 2018 and 2019 actuals, but I can do whatever council would like and reduce that.
Well, so all impacted by training this year because there's none, almost except Zoom stuff, but the, the, the general statement you said was you need to catch up on some things. You don't have a certain conference or a certain blah, blah, blah. But you feel there's enough, a couple of years in here that you haven't done anything and that's not good for our expertise in-house. Would that be?
That's a great.
Different summation that you gave, less, less smart.
Kip, could you? Kip, would it be difficult for you to just add a note then on the 5800, perhaps note number two, and just give us, you know, a couple ideas, a little bit, not much detail, but just something that we have in our hip pocket to explain.
If I, and I'll just kind of touch on this because this was something that's been discussed already. The intent on the second, yeah, sorry Rusty, the second budget that we put out is intended to have notes on all the 5800 lines throughout the budget. So you'll have an idea, the council have an idea of where, in general, where those dollars are going.
That's fantastic. That is great. Thank you.
I know somebody.
Yes.
Kelly.
I just wanted to remind the council, similar to the police, you can call me Kelly. I actually prefer it. I just reminder, just similar to the police department. Water and wastewater are highly regulated and require a special expertise in knowledge. And with our leadership, they have to kind of have expertise in all the areas that we see in the budget. And so I would just remind everyone that water and wastewater are very highly regulated, have high expectations and reporting from a, from EPA and the federal government in many ways. And so I just would encourage you to keep that in mind, just similar to the police. They, they have to stay certified and, and trained in their response to keep themselves out of trouble. So I just insight, thank you.
Yeah, public health is.
Great, great.
Public safety. So yes, Rusty.
Yeah, I was just saying, great insight. And, and Kip, when you're writing up the notes, keep that in mind. It doesn't have to be a detailed, detailed note, just simple. Thank you.
We do want to know about cupcakes though.
Will do. Thank you.
Go, did you have something?
You lost me on the flavor of the cupcakes. I'm sorry.
No, I don't, I eat any kind of cupcakes. Page 59, Water Treatment Operations. Once again, we'll have some more specificity coming. You want to speak? All right. I know what he was going to say. 59, any, anything there?
Waste water. Can I point out a couple of things, Mayor?
Yes, please.
The very last line item, the 6310 chemicals. We had budgeted $12,000 for 2021. Back in 2017, that number was 92,000. With the plant expansion and the different, different processes that we added, we were able to save a lot of money in chemicals. So I just like to point that out as well.
And I'll bet you told all the people, council in orientation, how that happened. Because I don't remember, but I, I always appreciate your efficiencies.
How much time you got?
Just, just, just the elevator speech is fine.
We will have a new orientation coming up here for new member. Page 60, Wastewater Capital. There's probably, I don't, do you have any, I don't have any questions. Moving on to 520, Wastewater Field Services. Seeing no questions, hearing no questions, I'm moving to 62, Wastewater Customer Services. Once again, we have a individual who does multiple hats on administration for this item. And 6535 is what I heard. All right.
Senior on salaries. Is there some sort of training plan or succession program or something that you're looking at or that your, your leaders are looking at in terms of teaching the younger, younger generation to step up? Is, is that kind of planned or budgeted or thought, thought about?
I encourage training across the board for operators in both water and wastewater. Apparently our water plant requires an A. We have two A licenses and one B license. And we encourage those, those operators to learn every aspect. I could, and, and here's a great example of that. Just, just this weekend, we have one of them on vacation. Another one of them on call that has to go attend, I'll just say a family emergency. And the third one has to step up and fill in. So they're all pretty capable of of doing those things. There's certain, certain things that not all of them can do, but we work on that every day. And retaining staff is probably the biggest. The most important part of that is once you get them up to speed and you want to keep them. So we don't lose that, all that. Because our water system is a big puzzle, especially when you get into flag depletion and augmentation and so on. So we try. And then on the wastewater side, we, it's a B operated plant and we have two As, a B and a C, and two Cs of the five operators. So we encourage that, the same, the same process philosophy there too. So.
Okay.
Good question.
So that concludes the main part of the budget. I'm turning to 64 and 65. There's a few minor changes I saw in the, in the salary structures and pay grades to accommodate certain circumstances, including new assistant city manager and some other, other items. Does council have any questions or does the staff have any commentary? The next pages are all our debt service and we're on page six. If, if anybody has any of these of interest, 64, 66, 67 is all the new paid off allocations. I highlighted all the 2021 stuff myself. If anybody has anything on page 66 through 69, please speak up. After that, we have our capital projects. We've kind of talked about those in a pretty extensive fashion in a previous meeting. If any council has any additional questions this time, this will be the time to bring those up. Hearing none, I, I will welcome the council to. Oh. We, yes.
Sorry, I'm running, I'm running up to make a comment on that. So since the budget was presented, or we started the budget, budget presentation in wastewater, I do have two changes in capital projects. I just got numbers on those today. I'd like to add, it's about $7,100 to replace the UV bulbs for the disinfection process. Those just need to be done. They have to be done. So I'm going to add that to the budget. And then also the, the spectrophotometer that we had in there. The vendor just called us and said it went up about 25%, which makes it around 9,000 instead of 7,000. So I just wanted to bring that to council's attention.
If you, if you could just send us an email or something, that'd probably work for when we see the change in there.
And it'll be in the, so that, that whole process will be, we just updated it and it'll be in the new version.
Good, appreciate that. I welcome council to identify any other questions that come up past tonight to send them to staff. Obviously, Emily, Darren, and whoever they're appropriate to, the directors. But that concludes, in my mind, at this point, our first pass review of the budget. And I appreciate all the good questions we got and not seeing any other business. Do we have Mr. Paff on yet?
We do not, sir. Yeah, but he was going to zoom in.
All right, ordinances on initial posting. Let's see Sally. This is a first reading of ordinance 1383. It says, Planning Director Riley is the presenter. There she is. Thank you.
Mayor, are we going to have any discussion on public comment on, on that?
We're on initial posting, so. Under our public hearing, we'll do all that.
Okay.
Shall we wait for Councilwoman?
She knows the subject real well. So she said, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Carr, council members. I'm Sally Riley. I'm the planning director and this ordinance, 1383, we have been working on with the Planning Commission and the City Council for over a year. The purpose of this code amendment is to close a loophole that allowed for single family development in multifamily zones without a subdivision as a permitted use. So in the ordinance, there are the recital sections, all the whereas's, which basically give you the purpose of this ordinance. And then moves into a section that has new definitions regarding mobile homes. We also discovered that our definitions related to modulars, mobile homes and RVs were not in alignment with the state definitions. So those have been upgraded and clarified. And then the major work on this ordinance deals with the table of uses. And as you can see in 1809, oh, I know. Number one, that there are no allowances for a single family home in the multifamily urban and multifamily suburban zones. And then Planning Commission also recommended that should there be duplexes, apartments, or other multifamily projects that rather than a permitted use, that these be conditional uses in order that the community can have public hearings before the Planning Commission and the City Council. And the conditional use allows for the council and the staff to help mitigate potential impacts that higher density projects bring with them. So with that, this evening, we recommend your approval of the first reading of ordinance 1383 and set the public hearing for November 19th. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions at this time on initial posting? We're on initial posting.
Yeah. Sally, we received an email from one, one in the community who's concerned that the way that we've laid this out adds more layers of bureaucracy and uncertainty to developers. So can you address that? It's not my intention to make this process more onerous on our business community. And so if we inadvertently put in snares in here, can you please talk about that? I'm going to say specifically in the duplex multifamily section, conditional use versus permitting.
Yes. So a permitted use allows for a development to be submitted and it is only staff review and other agencies. It does not go through a public hearing process other than the allocation of TAPS to that project, which come to City Council. And you just did that for a duplex project for the Habitat for Humanity Trail, Trailhead Project. So a permitted use is more streamlined for the, the developer. There is a notice process to the community in which they can provide, the surrounding property owners or anyone else can provide input to the staff. And we typically pass that input on to the develop, developer for their consideration. However, you do have to be careful not to overreach and ask for the moon when you can only stay within the required standards. So that's a permitted use. Changing these to conditional use then means that the developer must meet the 11 criteria, which are very similar to a permitted use. But there are public hearings and the council would have the option to add conditions that could potentially help mitigate some of the impacts. Let's say, for example, lighting and they had tall light poles or standards in their parking lot. And even though within the standards, they're allowed to go up to 25 feet, the council says, no, this is a residential area. the council says, no, this is a residential area. So we're going to request only fifteen-foot-high standards, as an example.
So then, so thank you, that's, those are some good examples. The concern I would have, just put myself in the shoes of, of an, a developer, is this adding layers of cost to them in their forecasts, their budgeting, their planning, their, their determining whether this is a viable project?
The cost to them is really time. And the administrative process is, our first review is required to be, and approval, if we can get to an approval state, is required to be done in about forty-five days. In order to get through the conditional use process, it's more of a ninety-day process. As far as the application fee, it's the same.
So we will, we will discuss a lot of these things if we proceed to put this past the initial posting.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Hearing none, seeing the city attorney.
I just wanted to provide it some additional procedural background because we're currently under a moratorium for this particular type of use. And just to refresh your memory, council, when you pass that moratorium, said that it can be lifted upon a resolution. So, um, once this issue is resolved, we'll, we'll bring a resolution after the second reading, lifting the moratorium and, and then this code would be active at that time. So I just wanted to let you know that that's coming so that you don't get surprised by it in a month or so.
Thank you. The, uh, there was a public comment, but that person has left. And, uh, so I will close public comment and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider the first reading of ordinance thirteen eighty-three, series twenty twenty.
Thank you, I'll second. Suzanne.
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
LaBar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We are on eight B, which is consider first reading of ordinance thirteen eighty-five. And the city manager and city attorney are going to weigh in on that one.
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, I'll bring it up real quick. So, um, in the last meeting and what's been discussed over the last, uh, about last six months or so, there's been discussion about the, uh, divide, revising the business licensing ordinance. Couple, couple issues with it is that it's been, it, the language for the licensing fee is located in two, two places within the municipal code. So the intent of this ordinance is to amend that and in both areas and make the language, bring common language to, to both areas. Jason made a recommendation that we keep it in both locations because people, our residents look in both locations to find this information. The end state is to, is to revise the, the business licensing fee from fifty dollars from currently into next year, twenty twenty-one, to an amount of forty-two dollars and fifty cents. And then in twenty twenty-two, January first, revise, revise it again down to thirty-five dollars. Where it'd be permanently at thirty-five dollars. And that would bring us, um, to just below what the state average is for business licensing in the state of Colorado. So we'd be highly competitive with all of their business environments in terms of the licensing fee for, um, the city. Jason?
So yeah, just to elaborate, uh, you know, after council gave the initial direction to move forward with this, and that's part of why you have the ordinance in front of you tonight. So we have this fixed, um, for the, uh, the code to be adjusted so that the, um, adopted budget makes sense based off of these numbers. Because the code as it currently sits, has it hardcoded in at fifty dollars, an ordinance would be needed. And so part of the adjustment and part of the code also said that it could be changed by resolution, but typically you can't change an ordinance by a resolution. And so that's why we're going through and cleaning up the code so that it's consistent. And I, I won't bore you with all the details of the legislative history I went through to try to figure out what happened twenty-five, thirty years ago when this was done. So unless you really want to.
I note that, uh, the city attorney and I had found these fees in different places and we were having a little, what? What are you talking about? And anyway, we, we merged on the fact that there's in two places, which is unfortunate. But, uh, anyway, hopefully this will resolve that. Kelly, uh, council member Case.
Kelly, he's fine, thank you. So did you say that the budget reflects for twenty twenty-one, forty-two, fifty?
It does.
Because I just say that for simplicity and not to bog staff down, I don't, I think we, I don't, we should have just gone to the thirty-five and be done with it. But, um, I don't want to have you have to go through changing the budget at this point.
If we did, we'd have, we'd have to go through the budget and make cuts again because we're real, because the revenues were much lower than we expected this last year already. So, um, it would force us to be below a flat, but what we'd have is a flat budget, but agreed, it would make it easier.
It would make it easier, but forget I said anything.
Councilmember Zuluaga.
So am I right in understanding you, Jason? Then you're going to create a, uh, resolution for an ordinance change before the budget's passed so that those budget numbers are.
So yeah, this ordinance here, and I apologize that it came late. I was misunderstanding, it was added late to the packet yesterday and that's.
It was sent to you in the email.
It was in an email.
And I have. Come in the original packet, so I apologize for that delay. But basically, it's after this, this will set the ordinance, uh, cleaning up the language in the code. It'll also set the, the, a dollar figures for next year and the year after to get it to that thirty-five. And then after that, council can change the amount via resolution because it won't be physically located, a dollar figure in the code.
Oh, I see.
It'll be a part of the schedule of fees or, or located, um, something that we would publish on an annual basis.
Thank you for clarifying the more details.
If there's a whole litany of changes to the burden on the city to administer this program or if, on the alternative, if it goes way lower, council has the flexibility to be far more dynamic in the future as opposed to having a delay of a month and a half to two months as we draft and go through the whole process.
And I will, I will also just caveat on this in that we were in discussions with Muni Revs right now. We're trying to simplify this process so that it's aligned with our current, um, financial information system that we're using for tax, sales tax collection. The new one that we got that, that's aligned with Colorado's SUT system. Thank you. So it's a, um, sales and use tax system that the, that the state of Colorado just implemented. So Emily needed to get this information as fast as possible because we needed to get this information to them so that it's in, in the system for twenty twenty-one. It takes a little while to happen. So you want to elaborate, Emily, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you, Darren. I was just going to say that because the letters for renewals to all of our current license holders go out before the end of the year. So we're trying to get that done this month so that they have those, the new rates and the new information in hand.
Thank you. I see nobody signed up for public comments, so I will open and close that. Counsel, any further, uh, discussion? Hearing none. All right. Go ahead if you have something.
Yeah, Mayor Carr, it's simply a, a, a comment. And, and this is directed to the citizens or to a lot of the business owners actually. Because in going through the election cycle, I've, I've, uh, heard some feedback that, that I, I'm not business-friendly and I, I don't agree with that. And I hope that some of the businesses see that, that I am very supportive of this and not only this amendment, a legitimate, and I know I have come across that I don't agree with the vendor fee because I don't agree with the rationale. But if there's any other place that businesses are seeing what appears to be an unjust, a fee that they have to pay, that the logic that has been generated by the city to justify the fee that they have heartburn with, I would gladly support you bringing it forward so we can discuss it for, further. I, I ran on citizens first, but businesses are a close number two. And I want them to know that I'm thrilled to see at least this business license fee reduction taking place. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will, uh, entertain a motion from you, council member Neil.
With that, in that case, I, I don't have it in front of me. So, um, I would like to make a motion to, um, move forward with the first reading of the stated ordinance as discussed.
Ordinance number thirteen eighty-five, series twenty twenty, thank you, sir.
Set the public hearing for November sixteen. Nineteenth, like I said.
That's actually not in our text here, but it's in the thing that I gave. So with those changes to the motion, I second it.
LaBar?
Yes.
Neil?
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. We're on to public hearings, there are none, new business, there is none. And we're on to reports. Um, I'm going to read off some events. Unfortunately, we don't have too many events, but, uh, by the way, we had a blast at the Halloween Memorial Park giveaway. Uh, I had a blast anyway. We got to shoot candy and light sticks, lightsabers with candy, with Candy McDaniel. And, uh, that was, that was really fun.
I heard there was some really spectacular dance moves.
She, she was very generous.
That's not what I heard, I heard it was your dance moves.
My, my old seventies disco days, yep. I had the John Travolta suit and everything back in the day. I also had hair then, but, uh, that's a whole nother story. But yeah, it was a wonderful thing, the, the staff was great, we had a great booth. Very, very wonderful thing put on, thank you, Cindy. Events coming up this weekend, November sixth and seventh, Rocky Mountain Christmas Boutique benefiting Choices at Shining Mountain Golf Course. For more information, call eight, call six eight seven twelve hundred. Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty, the nonprofit cooperative of Teller County Meeting and Training, SOAR, Gail Gross's group, at three PM at Community Bank. For more information, call Gail Gross, she's at seven one nine two three three nine nine zero two. It's a big group of nonprofits that gets together and collaborates on lots of good ideas. November eleventh, twenty twenty, a big day, Veterans Day. Eric V. Dixon, uh, American Legion Post nineteen eighty is, uh, calling their event, calling all events this year. Uh, calling all bets. It's a free barbecue, uh, it's limited seating, so they need you to RSVP at the Shining Mountain Golf Course. They're going to have two seedings, one at two PM and one at five PM. They've invited me, thank you very much. But, uh, it's on Facebook, it's online. The phone number isn't here, but I can get that to anybody if they need it. Chamber Business After Hours for November seventeenth has been canceled. I have put in, in each of the council's box, uh, some Woodland Park reliever route information. I've been working with, uh, uh, council member Zuluaga and PPACG, I've been working with him for months. And, uh, we, we've, uh, we had a meeting with the senior leadership at PPACG. I asked him, what do we need to do and when and how much and what, what, where for? Because I, I wanted to make sure that, at least while I'm sitting here, that I don't drop the ball a, at all. And, uh, and so they were very kind, uh, John and Andy down there, went through some things, C-Dot was there, we got some wonderful information. I've, I've given each of the council the, the white paper, which is sort of the cookbook. It's not very specific, but I got into a discussion about, you know, if you guys want a hundred fifty million, we're going to be a little while coming up with that. But I, I got some very information, good information that we're talking about five digits kinds of money from the Woodland Park. And I think we can do that. So I will have more information on that as we go forward. But we're going to engage with Cripple Creek, with the county, with the mine, with the casinos, with the ski areas. Uh, I'm going to be actively doing that with the city, uh, councils and, uh, things that are out west of here to try to help us get a pool of money. And so I was interested that the, it, it, there is a fees, and of course, it's, this is steps. And so they're looking at certain design studies and things like that. But the, the next step doesn't require gazillions of dollars like I thought it did. And so we're going to, I'm going to be a little aggressive on that. More to come. Something else. Oh, we have a wonderful poster that the Historic Preservation Committee has generously offered some copies for the council. You want to hand, would you mind handing those out? It's a wonderful, uh, David Langley does a wonderful job, the, the Historic Preservation Committee does a wonderful job. And, uh, I so appreciate these, I have several of these hung up in my, in my home because they're just wonderful, Woodland Park Heritage, they really are, they're just spectacular. We have some of them around in the building, um, also, but these are, this is a nice one, this is a really fun one. Thank you. I don't know, you probably can't see any of this, but it's, it has to do with, uh, the, uh, transportation modes that, uh, we've gone through. And this is the twenty twenty version is Woodland Park Transportation, Celebrating Transportation. That's it for me. Councilmember LaBar.
Um, I, I don't really, I don't have anything to report this evening. I'd just like to congratulate all of the candidates who run in the, ran in the election. Everybody did a great job. And congratulations to Stephanie for winning the election. We look forward to working with you, so thanks.
Councilmember Case?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil?
Yes, Mayor Carr. And I apologize for not being there in person, I think everyone has been notified. I'm still recovering from the surgery this morning or this afternoon.
Well, you're.
Try to get through my, keep.
Thank you.
Try to get through the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful notes that I have because we did have a meeting on November second. We have gone ahead and established the citywide cleanup date for twenty twenty-one. And we are proud to announce it's June fifth will be the main, uh, date that we're targeting with June nineteenth is our fallback. We're proud to announce that we did receive a very nice letter of appreciation from the senior setter, senior center, um, thanking, um, to Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee for painting the two storage sheds that the seniors have. We had some leftover paint and we went ahead and just cranked out the painting. And when I say we, uh, that is not myself, unfortunately, I did not participate. It's the members of the committee did, did it. So they deserved the pat on the back. Report on our current financial situation, we have a little bit more than a thousand dollars left in our, um, account. And we are looking at some ideas of spending it. One of them is to, uh, replace the banners that we put up for the city for the citywide cleanup. So that's one idea that's being pursued. There was one thing I wanted to point out that Jan Wilson or Kumar sent out an email that we have scheduled for this Saturday, uh, November seventh at ten AM. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful is going to be taking some of the paint that we have and, uh, painting the underpass from Natural Grocers towards Safeway where there's a. towards Safeway where there's been a lot of graffiti. So it's kind of interesting. You don't see it very easily because it's an underground passage, but it's there, and it was identified as something that we could do to make Woodland Park a little bit more beautiful. So Jan is organizing that, and we look forward, the committee looks forward to doing that painting job on Saturday. And I think that's about as good as I'm going to get on this report. The pain medication's kicking in. I'm a little woozy, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for showing up. I appreciate that. Councilmember Path is absent, so Councilmember Zuluaga.
Thank you. So congratulations to our three candidates and congratulations, Stephanie, for your success. And congratulations, we actually came to a resolution pretty peacefully and simply compared to what's happening around the nation. So well done, Woodland Park. I don't have much to report from the liaison committees, except that the DDA did not meet this week. We'll be meeting on the tenth, and I would solicit your prayers for Mary Jo, who is the chair for the DDA. She's in hospital and certainly needs prayers. And I have been asked by the city clerk to introduce my wife. So Teresa, who's in the back, wave, says my wife, she's moved to town and has joined us, so welcome. Thank you, and thank you for that.
Newlyweds, okay. City attorney.
So I have a very brief announcement. I believe our illustrious city clerk is on track to predict the end time for two meetings in a row, so I would like an opportunity to see if you have any hot stock tips while we're here. I have nothing further, though.
Actually, we have to talk really slow to get to nine o'clock, but thank you.
Can I add one thought, Mayor?
Well, you're out of orders.
I know, I know.
You're totally out of order.
So Rusty, painting the graffiti off the off the underpass or the pass through by Safeway. In other communities, one way they solicit the youth to channel their creative art is to have a competition. So after you've repainted it, maybe we could solicit at the high school that it becomes a venue for our youth to express their art, and then we judge it and we do a competition. So it just might be a creative way to turn something which may have a bit of a off type of graffiti into changing it into something that's creative and engages the kids. That's all. Thank you.
Not, and and if Jan is not monitoring this, I will get the word out to her of your suggestion. That's a great idea. I've seen that done in other communities, too. The high school students really have some incredible artistic capabilities normally, so that would be a fun one. Thank you.
An administrative question. On the Zoom recordings, we do we record who the attendees and participants are in our permanent record?
I don't think you can, though, unfortunately.
Okay, I just was wondering. City manager Tangeman?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll go through a CDRF update. No, actually, I'm gonna, Emily, I'm gonna let you go ahead and do your your report first in terms of, of course, third quarter financial report.
Oh, okay. That works. Thank you, Darren. So included in your packet is the third quarter financial report. And of course, again, the pandemic is affecting us all, and it has affected our budget. So for the general fund, seventy-five percent of the way through the year because this this report ends September thirtieth. We've expended sixty-two percent of what was budgeted, and operating expenditures are one percent below twenty nineteen or about thirty thousand dollars below. And that's mainly due to a hiring freeze and a freeze on all travel and training budgets due to the COVID nineteen pandemic during the second quarter. And then, as always, staff continues to be cautious and conservative with our expenditures. And then, let's see, a couple other highlights in the inter and nondepartmental budget. You'll see a fifteen percent increase of fifty-five thousand four hundred and fourteen dollars. I mentioned health insurance and brokerage fee increases over twenty nineteen. I forgot to note that actually, a lot of that increase is due to our custodial cost increases, which due to COVID nineteen, they did increase for cleaning, increased cleaning in buildings. And then also, our animal control contract with the county was was an increase over previous year. You'll see the police budget is about seven percent below the same period in twenty nineteen, and a lot of that has to do with in twenty nineteen, the Kelsey Barris case increased the police budget. And then, for as far as revenues, at this point, seventy-three percent of general fund budget revenues were received, seventy-five percent of the way through the year, and six percent above, however, what we where we were in twenty nineteen. Sales tax continues to trend up, which is one of the ironic things of this pandemic is that the spend is spending at grocery stores has increased due to the pandemic and people being at home more. Couple of the decreases, though, that we're seeing, one of them being highway user tax, which is forty-four forty-four percent below, which comes from the state. And this is, in particular, the second quarter, a lot less driving was happening, so that's why we have that decrease. And then it moves on to, you know, our other funds. I do want to point out, of course, that the Culture and Recreation Fund continues to be the most affected by the pandemic because of closures, mandatory closures in particular during the second quarter. And so they're making ground, of course, now that they're open back up. And I do I did note that on October ninth of this year, so it was actually, you know, in this fourth quarter, the reservation is no longer required for open swim hours at the Aquatic Center. So that is, we're seeing more revenues coming in at the Aquatic Center due to that change. But you'll note that because of the closures, in particular, the Aquatic Center, you know, twenty-one percent of budgeted revenues have been received and seventy-five percent of the way through the year. And then you'll see forty-five percent decrease in personnel for the Aquatic Center or a decrease of a hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars due to employee furloughs in the second quarter that have continued into the third quarter and beyond. And that's really it for the highlights I wanted to go over for the third quarter financial report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Emily. I'll go on to the CDRF application, CDRF status, Coronavirus Relief Fund status. At this point, we have had nineteen applications completed. Seven are still incomplete for total business applications for a total disbursement of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-one, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand. Nonprofits, we've had seven, seven application or eight applications, seven complete, one incomplete for a total of seventy-two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand in distributions. Resident applications, we've received twelve complete, eleven incomplete, for a total of eleven thousand four hundred in distributions. To right now, total app, all applications for CDRF at this point, after the second iteration of applications, is now at three hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars. And so now we are moving into the third iteration, third and final CDRF application period, which will end on November fourteenth, and we hope to get, you know, please, if you can, please encourage our local businesses, nonprofits, and residents to apply at that point. At this point, the city, in terms of total city expenditures, we've expended and been reimbursed for two hundred and one thousand, three hundred and thirty thousand, and total community relief has is nearing three hundred and one thousand. That means we have a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars left to to reimburse, to to distribute between businesses, nonprofits, residents, and city expenditures. Any questions on that? We are on schedule to to expend the funds before the end of the year.
So if I heard you correctly, November fourteenth is the last day that they can apply for the third phase?
Correct. The third, yeah, third application iteration for us.
So nine more days. You have, you don't have any in that hopper yet, is that right?
We do. We have some applications already, so we're just asking that we get the word out. We already have it posted to our Facebook page and in social media and on the website. So yes, we're we're seeking additional applications. I will say that we've had a drop off from the first application process. It was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand distributions then. It was a hundred and seven in the second iteration. So I do anticipate, you know, as we get go for this, there's gonna be fewer fewer applications, but and distributions. But yes, we're in our third iteration.
I believe the deadline is the sixteenth, because that's Monday.
Sorry. Six, yeah, you're right.
Number sixteenth, because the fourteenth is a Saturday.
You're you're correct. It's the sixteenth. My apologies. It's on the website.
Close of business?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I've been, I'm sorry. So I've been pushing the businesses. I know Councilmember Neil was gonna do the same thing, but I've really been on a push for the residents. There's many residents that don't understand that there's a five hundred dollar potential for their grants, and we've thousands of people out there who are eligible for that. It has to be COVID related, but it's sitting out there, and we could easily, I I'd welcome the media to maybe put that in a little paragraph or something, but we we do have a lot of residents who have been affected. I've talked to many of them, and they said, well, I I don't know what I'm gonna do. I said, we'll apply to the city. We've got to fund for that. So I would, for the thousands of people that are watching out there tonight, you said with tongue in cheek, I'd appreciate you going to the city site. There's five hundred bucks there, potential assistance to you. Darren, anything else?
Yeah, we need to get our website.
Excuse me, Darren, one more question on that. One more question. So we have a hundred and seventy-one thousand. The mayor's just expressed appeal to whoever wants to to apply for that. Will you remind us what the consequences, if we have any remainder residual left in that fund at the end of this?
We won't.
We, oh, we won't.
We we have midway through this process, the the federal government and state amended the eligible expenses for this. So public, before that, it was much more difficult to get public safety and law enforcement expenses reimbursed as a result of CDRF funds, so there's, we have, we have those expenditures. We want to give one last chance to businesses to take advantages, but the city does have expenditures where we can be reimbursed for our law enforcement and public safety requirements that we had during the COVID period for the year, so.
That's updated since we went through the process.
It actually came at the end of September, and I will just say that our website does say November fourteenth, which is not right. So we'll go back on and get that fixed. We need to get that fixed to November sixteenth, because that's on a Saturday, I believe, November fourteenth is. So we'll get that fixed.
Yeah, I had to scratch out the October thing on the flyers we had out in front, too.
Okay.
I guess in that vein, just for everybody's edification, the reason the date continues to move and we continue to do iterations is, as as just discussed, some of this information has been dynamic from the federal and state level. And so we're originally operating under the idea and understanding that if we didn't get all this done by October thirty-first, the state was going to retract these funds. They've since represented that they're not going to do that. We had an agreement with the county, so we had to work that out, but that's why we're continuing to move that date. It's not because of mismanagement, but because we're doing what the state and federal government's requiring of us.
Is that, is that, is that answer your questions related to that? Okay. I also want to, tonight, it's not a, this should not come to anybody's surprise, but I want to thank city council and your support and staff support and members of the community have reached out to me in support that I've submitted my resignation to city council, and my last day with the city will be December eleventh. I will have more comments, you know, my last meeting on December third, but felt appropriate just to, because you've received my my letter of resignation that I'll be moving on at that point. But I want to thank city council for the support that you provided to me in our discussions on this. And I also thank the the staff and and this community members who have reached out to me and and supported me in this transition as well. So thank you for that. And I also want, we're not gonna have a meeting between now and November eleventh. So just want to, you know, wish everybody a happy Veterans Day and thank every veteran in our community for protecting us and all the sacrifices that they've made for for our country and our community. So that's all my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll have more to say, as you say.
Thank you.
Down the road. Thank you. Ooh, didn't quite make it.
Eight forty-six.
Eight forty-six. We're adjourned. Thank you.